Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:03. Bear with us. I hope this will be a good meeting and fast meeting, so we should be good. And as a reminder to the public, if you'd like to speak before the commission tonight, please fill out a speaker's request form and hand it to our city clerk there, Ms. Jessica Cooper. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Here.
Chair Fang?
Here.
Sorry, something in my throat. I think Commissioner Patel has some... She's coughing like me, too, so if you'll excuse us today. So tonight, um... So tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice Chair Oblea.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, and on to number three in public comments. Any member of the public may address the commission on items within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of this posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Has there been any submissions for public comment?
Yes, we have one from Rich Duran.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Rich Duran. I was asked by a councilwoman in the class to work on a new project. And since I have been at the state of Eastville since 2004, since the city has progressed a certain amount and not taken a step back to see what they are going to achieve. City Project 12-2051 has proposed a building on Walmart. That's a representative of the corner of the park. It had thirty acres of acres of conditions and attributes. The market is stretched to limits. City of Eastville is now developing over three hundred homes just east of the city. Just west of the commercial building, we're putting more traffic. City of Ontario has managed to build over fifty hundred homes and a number of shot in the city, which is the most of the twelve locations. City of Chino are building numerous larger commercial buildings and traffic, semi-houses and large enterprises. Because of City of Eastville, it fails to speed with other cities, traffic, and people. So in the past, uh, few years, ten cities have voted not to allow a Walmart in their city. Crime issues with Walmart. Walmart decides to open its stores also on Walmart Avenue, and it's a rise. Tulsa had a place, had a place in Tulsa, security officer up to ten hours a day with an on-peak officer. Now, an on-peak officer is working at the store twenty-four seven. The day doesn't go by that a number of shoplifters are caught by shoplifting. That's only one officer who's going to the store. It would max out the sheriff department, great to be here in the city of Eastville. In five years, Tulsa PD has responded to over five thousand three calls to WalMarts and four WalMarts in their city. Through Walmart, a robber suspect killed himself in a parking lot. He shot at a parking lot with a rifle, came, crime will go up, and the sheriff department will max out. I'm going to call some Walmart. More than two hundred violent crimes have created intent murders, attempted kidnapping, multiple stabbing shootings, and occurred in the nation forty-five hundred WalMarts this year. In June, a SWAT team killed a hostage prisoner at a Walmart in Amarillo, Texas. In July, after a Walmart employee reported a recharge as he was slaughtered, after a shot at the HHS, he came down and died. He made a basic, um, thirty registered sex offender was using a demo laptop to Walmart review and watch out for his sex. Also, in May, in twenty cities, three, um, three centers were raised before retail had over sixty, fifty-six south homes and tablets. Just last time, Tulsa fell down, took a victim to a Walmart parking lot, and the suspect did kill himself, which is just a violence. The city thought that's never happened in their city. Constant calls from Walmart are creating. Walmart recognizes that and refuses to be beaten about it. They allow people to camp over nine in the parking lots. It's all about safety for employees and the community. Walmart has its benefits. More than two hundred violent crimes, um, so...
I'm sorry, excuse me, sorry, Mr. Duran. You're gonna have to wrap that up. I'll give you a few seconds there.
So, proposals to, I'm just giving my man that if you can build a Walmart that you guys propose, it's kind of a stretch of job or resources for law enforcement, the sheriff department. And, uh, as it is, they don't have enough officers to do the great calls as it is. And crime officers will go up, so I'm just proposing that you guys look at it again and then you know about that Walmart that I might and I'm involved.
Thank you. And is there any other speakers tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to, um, number four. Um, any additions or revisions to the agenda by staff?
Yes, sir.
Anyone on the commission? Like I promised, we'll be pretty quick. On number five, consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a commissioner, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Uh, would staff like to make any changes?
No, sir.
Any members of the public?
No, we have not received any.
Commissioners? No? Okay, well then, um...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Am I speaking too low? Everybody can hear me, right?
What?
Okay. Moving on to number six, public hearings. At this time, we will conduct three public hearing items. If you'd like to speak before the commission tonight on any of these public hearing items, please complete a blue speaker's form card and give it to the clerk. Following the staff reports and opening of the public hearings, I will call those who have submitted a blue speaker card to speak to the commission. We will begin the public hearing item with six point one. And, uh, Mr. Norris, do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a continued item from your prior meeting. Kanika Kith is here to give you an update and give you staff's recommendation.
Good evening, Commissioner. This project is a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a car rental facility, which will be operated by Enterprise in Platinum at the Goodman Commerce Center. From the last meeting in June, the applicant Platinum and Enterprise has spoken with the property owner Goodman and has agreed to make some changes to the project, and I will talk about those changes later. Um, but here are the conditions that were presented to you last month and have not changed. That is, first, the car rental operation cannot operate until an amendment to this specific plan is approved, which happened last week on Wednesday by the council and the second meeting, the ordinance going back to council on the twenty-fifth, and the ordinance will be effective thirty days after that. The hour of operation for Enterprise will be the same as Platinum, and Enterprise is limited to storing, to keeping a maximum of ten cars on site, and they will be parked in the gated area behind the building. Here are the changes to the condition. The condition that's in your packet this evening include the changes that is presented up here, and that is allowing Enterprise to provide service to the entire community, which we remove the limitation that restricts Enterprise to only servicing Platinum customer. Allow Enterprise to advertise its location, including installing a sign on the building that's not eliminated. And we add a new condition, that is to restrict the operation of the, um, car rental to only twenty-five cars per day. Is ours understanding that twenty-five is more than what Enterprise is renting out at the Norco location? Um, the condition has also been written that the applicant will maintain a daily log of their car rental and that it will, the log will be available upon request by the city if there's ever complaint about the operation for inspection. We also remove the limitation on the side of the Enterprise office from the condition. The original condition had it limit to five hundred square feet. We removed that from the condition. Here show the changes in the condition is also in your agenda packet. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the new condition that's presented to you. If the commission doesn't approve with staff recommendation, the commission may approve the project with additional changes to the conditions of approval that is adding new condition or removing any condition. Continue the project and direct the applicant to make revision to the project or deny the project. The property owner Goodman and the applicant, both Platinum and Enterprise, are here this evening to answer any question from the commission. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Kanika. And open public hearing now, and would the applicant like to speak before the commission?
Good. Basically, I went over everything with the city and all those conditions for myself, the owner, by conclusion. I think that's more than just the, the amount of customers that we have. We do like the ability to rent and to retail if needed. Because we do have existing customers in the city that we would never want to turn away. We do feel that twenty-five cars a day is sufficient based upon demographics and cities surrounding us. And it would be a huge help to all other restaurants that are waiting a long time to pick up at this time. Together, of course, I agree with everything that was proposed. Do you guys agree?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Patel?
So it was shared that you don't have more than twenty-five sales per day at the Norco location? Is that correct?
I own the body shop in Platinum, so Enterprise...
I'm sorry.
I have a question. I did meet with Tracy Simmons, the vice president, when I came to the numbers to show Mr. Norris. And their average is fifteen-five hundred, and they get a little over five hundred, which that's established in their over ten years. So a twenty-two day collision is open to twenty-five cars a day. Would be almost the same as Norco, but obviously we would just be open. So I, I, we don't see an issue with that at all.
So I've used that facility often. And I'm looking at overall activity. It's not always so much the, um, new sales, but how many return, how many exchange, because the vehicle they got didn't work out, and so they have another one. So, um, you know, to me, it's a little bit more than just what new rental contracts are going out, but it's all those that are also coming back in.
And I think that that's covered with my, my discussion with Mr. Norris. Because if there's only ten cars allowed on site at all times, then that wouldn't happen, because the ten cars returned to Enterprise would have to get those ten cars out. That's why we're limiting the ten cars on the premises. Otherwise, you're, you're a hundred percent correct.
Okay, 'cause that was my other, I, I deal with numbers for a living, so I'm like, how can you rent out twenty-five if you only have ten in inventory? So thank you, that's clarifying.
Yes, and, and the one other thing to add to that is that I don't know if the future is to see if these dogs is growing and amazing. We have to be on business. And, uh, if there was, you know, in Norco, there's four, four partner dealerships that do a lot of business to Enterprise, but they don't have these though. So that does, is a big percentage of the amount of rentals that is done in Norco.
Vice Chair Oblea?
I have a question for either the applicant or staff. Is this a sublease? You're subleasing part of your space to Enterprise Rent-A-Car?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens if you close shop? What happens to Enterprise?
My lease with Goodman, that has been approved with Goodman in their ten years of enterprise lease.
It, it what?
It mirrors the enterprise lease.
So that means?
So say I was to close shop for ten years.
Yes.
Enterprise doesn't have any smaller terms.
So they would have to close their door also?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
And I won't be going anywhere.
We hope so. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? I, I just have one, uh, easy question. What's the average wait right now that you're trying to eliminate at your shop? Where a person waits for a car? If they bring the car in and they need a, a rental car, how long do they have to wait on average?
And I do, I just tell you these numbers all day long in my brain, and the average is forty-seven minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there any speaker cards filled?
No, we, we did not receive any.
Okay. And with that, we will close public hearing and, um, open up commission discussion. Is there any further questions or concerns? Well then, um, go for a motion to approve agenda item six point one as recommended.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve as staff recommended.
Well, second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on. Okay, item six point two is a amendment to Eastville zoning code, section five point seven, related, relating to temporary display of non-commercial signs in residential zones. Presentation, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Welcome to the pre, prelude to the silly season, as we call it here. In front of you tonight is a proposed amendment to our sign code for what we're calling non-commercial signs in residential zones. But as we'll see in a minute, it's really specifically looking at one particular kind of sign, but we're writing it broadly, so it applies to all. So by way of background, the sign code and the sign regulations that we inherited from the county currently only allow two kinds of signs in residential areas. So if you're in a residential zoning district, any of our R districts, any of our A districts, can only put up two kinds of sign. One is a for-sale sign when you're selling your house, and the other is if you have a home occupation, you can put one two-square-foot sign on your house. Very few of our home occupations actually do that, so you don't see a whole lot of them around town. That's it, in terms of signage. There's no other kind of signage you can put up in front of your house. So, this really came up, you know, as I mentioned, with the, the impending start of the political season, because we're starting to get, both in planning and code enforcement, questions about what kind of signs can I put in my front yard to, you know, express my political opinions. So with that in mind, we're recommending a, an addition now of a new section to the sign regulations that will allow temporary signs in residential areas other than just the for-sale signs. So these would be for non-commercial purposes, and that's consistent with our, our general intent to keep residential areas free of commercial signage. So, these, the bullet points here are really just summaries of what's in your staff report. So basically, the signs couldn't have, could not have any commercial messages or advertising. You can have up to two per parcel. Each of those two can be three square feet, so between the two of them, six square feet, but you couldn't combine them into one six-square-foot sign. You can't put them in the public right-of-way, because that's now our property, and there are separate regulations already in the sign code for putting signs in the right-of-way. You can display them two months before and two weeks after a general election, and in the months of November and December. So regardless of what you want to put on the signs, these are, these standards apply to any of them, as long as they're not commercial. You can't attach them to utility poles, you can't block a sidewalk or be a hazard. So that's basically the standard that we're recommending. And as I mentioned, this is what we're trying to avoid. And if you drive around town, you'll see, maybe not quite this bad, but you'll see, um, the areas where this does take place. And what we're trying to get to is something more like this. Can't read that, says I support the cocktail party. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to get to. Now, one question that will come up, you know, especially because we're talking about the months of November and December, is, well, what about holiday displays? And that's really something that we'll work with code enforcement on. The intent is not to go after Santa Claus and make you take down those kinds of displays. The intent is really to go after these kinds of signs and prevent this kind of sign clutter. So that's something that staff is just gonna be aware of as we roll out these regulations and then start enforcing them. So, staff's recommendation is that you recommend these changes to the council. We'll put that in the form of an ordinance and take it to them at the next opportunity, which right now is going to be in September. So, you can take what we've written and recommend that. You can recommend additional standards, if you feel those are appropriate. Fewer standards, different ones than what we have, or you can recommend denial. And with that, I'll stop my presentation. We also have, as you know, our assistant city attorney, Mr. Harrington, here, if you want to get into some of the more detailed legal issues. But, uh, this is something that we've written in coordination with the city attorney's office, and we feel that it does pass legal muster. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, open public hearing, is there any speakers on this item tonight?
No, we have not received any public comment cards.
So that'll close public hearing and open, um, commission discussions. Commissioner Lee?
I, I have a couple of questions for staff. So I'm kinda looking at this and seeing, is there any reason as to why we're limiting it to two signs per parcel? And also, the next question would be the two months before and two weeks after. Usually, when the candidate files and the campaign goes on, it's about three months. So, um, I'm not sure why two months was suggested instead of three months. And then, two weeks? I mean, you should take it down after a week, or even right after the November or primary season day, you know, election day. So I think two weeks is way too long.
I think either one of those, either one of those changes will be fine with us. If you wanted to make it three months before and a week after that, that would be fine. And in terms of the, the number of signs, we talked about that at a staff level, and I, it was staff's opinion that that provided a reasonable outlet for people to express usually a political opinion. If you think three or some other number is more appropriate, that would be fine. We're just trying to come up with a, a limit that allowed you to express political sentiment without, you know, again, resulting in too much signage. But if you think a different number gets there without clutter, then that would be fine with us.
So my question is that if you go back, when we was talking about the size, so does it supersede the other size that we had before? So is that eliminated now, or is this a separate? When you say it's an addition...
This is different.
So this is different? This doesn't include the two-foot?
The public signs in the right-of-way are still governed by that part of the code.
Okay.
So if you want to put up...
This is purely for the front yards?
This is purely for the front yard, yes, sir.
And, and to go more towards your question, I believe the, the two-foot sign for commercial businesses in the home, that remains, that's still...
That'll still stay the same?
Yes, this would be in addition to that ability if you run a home occupation.
Okay.
Yes, I have a question or comment. You say you, you don't want to go after the Santa Claus signs, but other than Santa Claus signs, there could be other holiday signs up there for Thanksgiving, for Christmas. Have we thought about for Easter? Do we want to include that time of the year, like, uh, from the middle of March to the middle of April?
Yeah, the intent really is that this doesn't go after holiday displays. It goes after signs like this, so...
Yeah, but you could get a sign like that, but it could be a holiday dis, a sign, message. Jesus is the reason for the season, or something like that. That, that won't be considered, that won't be gone, gone after by our code, of course?
Well, I think we'd be happy to maybe write another section into it specifically saying that the intent is not to go after holiday displays. Those are perennially an issue for other reasons in, in town, but we've never really had an issue with holiday displays in terms of the size of a message that's put in the front yard. It's, it's usually been other issues about just the...
So that isn't the intent of this...
The intent is not to go after holiday displays.
Could it be? Could, um, um, some elected official later on could feel the need to go after those kinds of signs and use this code to go after those signs?
Well, I, yeah...
Thinking of the future.
Well, it, it's possible. They'd have to have the support of the rest of the council, I'm imagining. We take our direction from the council, so if that's where the direction was, yes, but we, I don't really see...
It would have to be a majority of the city council to do that, or it can't just be one councilman that says, "Well, look at these people have these signs, let's take them down."
Yeah, correct. The way staff works is, we don't respond to individual direction from, you know, say, a councilman or a councilperson. And I do want to point out that the, the ordinance as written does not regulate the content of the signs. So the, the signs that are permitted on, on residential property can have, you know, any kind of non-commercial message on them. So whether it be a political message, whether it be a holiday message, whether it be some other type of message, um, can be included on those signs. So while this is being geared towards ensuring people are able to kind of express their political views with standard political signs, it's not restricting people from using those signs to express other types of messages.
Okay, back to my origin of concern. Why then don't we cover Easter? Because we have November and December, which could be Thanksgiving and Christmas. Why don't we have also a time for, for the Easter season that they could have signs up? You know, if, if it comes down to near Easter and somebody puts a sign up like that, could code enforcement go after them and say, "Take that sign down, because it's not in that allotted time"?
The reason we put the, the times in that we did were, those are the times when we get the most requests or when we have the most issues with this. We haven't seen, that I know of, issues with excessive Easter signage or Arbor Day signage or, or anything else. So the intent was to address the time periods where we have the most issues, and that one of those is the political season and the other is the holiday season, the traditional end-of-year holiday season. If you wanted to expand it to include, you know, other holiday seasons, again, that, that's fine. We started off with what we thought was the, the minimum set of regulations necessary to achieve the purpose, but that it's not carved in stone by any means.
So we're saying that if there, then a resident puts up an Easter sign similar to that design, like that, with an Easter message on there, code enforcement won't go after them and tell them to take it down?
That's not the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
What about, um, so I guess on Commissioner Oblea's, perhaps federally, federally designated holidays? Just, I mean, unless there's something, because, I mean, Hanukkah, um, you know, Valentine's Day. What about over-the-hill forty, when you have all these flamingos in your front yard and the signage? I mean, it's that one. The one I would like to see is not just for, um, general election, but primaries as well. So both primary and general election, um, my fellow commissioners. And I'm confused, what about garage sale signs? I mean, that's, Commissioner Charleston and I have been anxious on the inundated garage sale signs, and that's not included in here. Is there any reason?
Well, garage sale signs are different in that they, well, those, the ones that are on the streetlight posts and everything, those are all illegal and those are taken down.
Or in a front yard?
This would not let you put a garage sale sign in your front yard. In my experience... In my experience, going to garage sales for like 40 years, you don't put a sign in your front yard because the garage sale is the sign. The signs are always somewhere else, so, so no garage sale signs. Well, if you wanted to put up one during the periods that are specified in this ordinance, then you could. Although, I don't know, would that be a commercial sign?
That could be considered a commercial sign, so that would...
So, maybe not. But the garage sale is itself is a sign.
I just don't think we've ever really finalized that whole issue of, I thought it was four times a year, you could have a garage sale in the city or what, I don't know. I just don't think we ever finalized any of that. I don't, maybe it's not a problem anymore.
Well, we are in the process, over the next year or so, of doing a comprehensive update of the municipal code and certainly the entire zoning code. So, we're keeping a list of all the things that have come up over the past few years. I think that's on the list.
Thank you, Letal.
Well, I guess mine is a mix of a question and concern. I do agree with some of the points that the commissioners have mentioned. I'm going to come from a perspective of private property. Kind of like to think that if somebody wanted to put something in their front yard, they'd be allowed to without any restrictions there or, you know, abuse. I mean, given what I've seen with code and some people in the community, they like to use the city as their, their, you know, to settle their disputes. And so, this is sort of an addition to that. And I just don't like restrictions. But if we were to be concerned with aesthetics and sign clutter, I would suggest moving forward by taking out the limits on when they can put it on. I don't know if the commissioners agree with that. I mean, we can have the size, the amount of signage that they can put on, but I'm already not very, I'm weary of that part already, so. But going forward, I, I would recommend taking down the, the limits on the time restriction, the timeframe restrictions.
Based on election time period, both primary and general?
Well, have no, no restrictions. If somebody...
All year long?
All year long. If somebody wanted to put a sign, because the reason is people also have flagpoles in their front yard, which sometimes they don't fly flags of any nation, right? It's a, sometimes it's a political, you know, statement that they're making, or they just want to fly something that they want to do. Sometimes it's in their backyard, but a lot of times it's in their front yard. You know, if we're, if we're going to have restrictions or something to recommend to deal with sign clutter, then, you know, we'll stick to the size and, you know, the limits on how many, but I don't think there should be a restriction on time.
See, I would disagree. When it comes to primary and general election, it's horrific. That one, I think there absolutely has to be a timeframe. Our city would look, I mean, it's bad enough when you're looking at empty lots, commercial lots, and you've got 10, 15, 20 signs, but, and I agree with the right to do in your front yard, but we're also a planned community and people move here because we don't just let anything, you know, just go there. But the political signs, I would disagree. I think we absolutely have to have a timeframe for primary and general.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think what you're suggesting is the same limit of two per yard, but you could put them up any time of the year.
Well, because I'll put an example, because there, I've seen many flags out there, whether it be for President Trump as a flag name or somebody else's name on there. This would allow somebody to make that an issue, if they had an issue with that, if this was being in their front yard, correct? I mean, that's sort of a question there.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because we didn't, we did not have flags in mind when we drafted this. I think that's something we want to state in here, is that it doesn't address flags. We've never regulated flags like that.
Because, I mean, when you're flying a flag, obviously, it's representing a nation or a location, but we, we've seen flags that are being flown that have nothing to do with any of those things. So, that, that's, with this, I mean, you can see where it can go.
Yeah, and we've never been in the business of regulating that, flags of any kind. And at this point, we're not recommending it go in that direction. If it becomes a problem in the future, we can certainly deal with it. It's never been an issue here and it's not the intent. I think that's, there were a couple of things I wrote down here that we might want to just be more explicit in what we've written, that flags are not, are exempt from these regulations and traditional holiday displays are exempt from the regulations. So, holidays, birthdays, you know, when I was looking for art like this, you put in a front yard signage and you see the over-the-hill stuff, and, yeah, there's a lot of that out there, but that's not the intent. It's more, you know, again, it's these kinds of signs.
I, I mean, I kind of see Sherfeng's point of view in that some of the displays and signs could be construed as political, so let's say, "Support our troops" sign in the front yard. You know, we would like to put that out all year round, but that could be construed as a political sign. Just having President Trump's name up there in the front yard with the sign. He is our president, but that could be very controversial these days and could be construed as a political sign, too. So, I, I see, I see where he's going with it. I also agree with the regulating the political signs as well. So, I don't know how to distinguish between those two.
So, just to make a point, the, the sign ordinance as written, it doesn't, it doesn't distinguish between messages. So, it's not regulating political signs, it's regulating just signs. And that's actually a bit of a requirement under the First Amendment. We can't regulate the message that's being displayed. We can regulate the time period in which, which signs are displayed and visa v. kind of regulate what, generally what types of signs get put up during those time periods. But if you were to eliminate just the general time period and allow two p, or two signs per residence at any time, those signs could be political signs, those could be any other type of non-commercial message during the entire year. And they could be switched out, you know, as the resident sees fit. So, kind of as written, right now, it's intended to kind of allow people to make sure that they have a, an ability to express their, their political message during the election season, but it also allows people to express other messages if they, if they choose. And by eliminating, if the, if the commission wanted to eliminate that time period, they would be able to express any message they wanted throughout the entire year, be it political or other non-commercial message.
I have a comment, please. I guess, listening to everyone, there's kind of a consensus of, why did we pick November and December, knowing that, you know, some of the biggest holidays are around that time of the year, but there are other holidays? So, if, you know, if we say it's during primary and general elections, I would be in agreement that we have to have that. I do not want to look at a sign for an entire year based on who wants to run for office next year. But should there be dates in, you know, November and December? You know, are we going to say, you know, March and April? I mean, at some point, should we be dictating what months it is allowed and what months is not allowed, other than how many signs, what size the signs are? The election signs are the big, that's the big one. That's the biggest thing we get complaints on. And the people that run for election, it's not those folks most of the time, but their, their committees that help them disobey every rule that is out there. They put their signs wherever they want. They go on private property and don't even ask. So, I, I think that needs to stay in. And the only thing is, is two months before, if we wanted the months in November and December, if we're going to separate the two, you know, when you vote Super Tuesday in November, those signs, people are putting those up in June already, in May. So, and a lot of times it's congressmen, it's attorneys, you know, looking for judge seats. I mean, we're getting them, we're, most of the people don't even know who these, some of these folks are. So, I agree wholeheartedly that we have to control the election signs. But as far as months, I could go either way, as far as do we need to actually name months like that?
Well, I'm for moving forward and taking out the, the time limitation if there's a motion for that by any of the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, how would we word, if we don't have a time limit on, how would we word this ordinance? Political signs?
It's currently stated as non-commercial signs.
Non-commercial signs, any non-commercial.
Wouldn't that mean any sign, then?
Exactly. And it would address your concern with the holidays, too.
Because we want to control political signs and we don't want them up all year long, right? So, how would we word that?
I don't believe we can.
Yeah, you, the, the First Amendment doesn't allow, you know, a municipality to regulate the message on a, a non-commercial sign. So, the, the city can regulate a, you know, kind of the time, place, and manner in which a message is presented.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to get at. So, how are we going to keep the political signs in control without putting a month in there? Months are a time limit, are times that you could have them on. So, if we don't say November and December, we're going to have political signs up all year long?
Isn't the primaries normally in June and then the general elections are in November? So, wouldn't it make more sense if we wanted to regulate a time, wouldn't it be June and November?
What I would recommend on, on, if you wanted to kind of allow for additional kind of political sign, or allow non-commercial messages during election seasons, would be to say a certain number of months or weeks before a statewide primary or, and a general election, which would allow, you know, a certain amount of time before and then after those periods, which would give that time regulation prior to and before the election.
But you did do that. You said two months before and you said two weeks after.
Yeah, exactly, which is what we did. And if, if the commission wanted to add, you know, primary seasons, I would, I would recommend adding, you know, the statewide primary prior to.
Well, then we have to add the special election season. Because sometimes council members resign, we have local elections, special elections going on at different times.
That's, that's my issue here, because we, okay, there's, once we put this down, and this is going through, correct me if I'm wrong, this is stated as non-commercial signs for front yards. If we put this restriction on, it, it does restrict any other signs besides political signs, right? Where the idea, like Vice Chair Obelia mentioned, is that we would like to control the clutter during political season. However, if we do pass this as a non-commercial sign, there's nothing to stop people from issuing complaints or having people that are not following our ordinance when they have a holiday sign or, you know, any other sign they, they want to put in the front yard, right? So, I understand clutter, let's limit the size, let's limit the, the amount. But once we add a timeframe, then that's, that's a slippery slope, in my opinion.
Well, Mr. Chair, a couple of thoughts as we're discussing it over here. One would be to say just whatever the time period, two months, three months, whatever before and so on, and just say any national statewide or local election. Then, then we're opening up, we have a special election one year, then we're covered there. The other thing would be to say that maybe during those periods, you can have whatever, two or three signs. Any other time, maybe take it down to one. So, if you want to put a Trump or whatever sign in your front yard all year long to demonstrate, you know, a non-commercial thought, you could do that. But then during the political season, when, you know, we're trying to avoid this, but allow more latitude, and in terms of the number during that political period, you might want to think of maybe three, because that would get a federal candidate, a statewide, and a local candidate. So, maybe, just some thoughts. So, you'd go up to maybe three during those periods before and after an election, then maybe back down to one the rest of the year.
I agree with that.
Commissioner Lee?
You're good?
Yeah. I mean, it is what it is.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
Well, it's a...
Well, it's convoluted, you can do it.
Yeah, I'll try. So, I'll make a motion with, but with some changes, so up to three signs per parcel.
Would that be three signs during, with, with the time restriction of two months prior and...
So, so we're going to say any election?
Three months prior.
Two, two months.
You think two?
Two months.
I think two's enough.
Plenty. Yeah, I mean, having run a lot of campaigns, they spend a lot of money on those signs. Right after you file papers, you can pretty much do it. So, I would give that latitude and give that one more month, but restrict the, the after one to one week.
I can live with that.
So, three months prior and then one week after.
Okay. And would it be any federal, state, or local election?
Yeah. So, that would cover general, primary, and special elections, right? Okay. And then, are we going to put March, April on top of November and December?
The discussion was three during those election periods and then one?
Any time of the year.
Any other?
Okay, one, okay. One any other year, okay.
And as far as the, the size of the signs, is the commission comfortable with the same size of the signs as presented by staff?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Was that, was that good for the motion?
It's understandable.
The other, yeah, totally understandable, thank you. The other things that we would ask you to have us do is write in exemptions for flags and make sure that we're saying in here that the intent is not... Scratch the idea about flags. Okay. No other changes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, if the thought is three months, that is over half the year that we would have signs in our community. Because you would have March, April, May, elections in June, and then you've got a week or two after. So, the month of July, we would have nothing. And then August, September, October, and then it would be November. We would have over half the year that we would allow signs in yards. I, three months is, that's a long time.
My thought is we're going to get it no matter what during the election season. It, I don't think, a few, a few weeks, adding a few weeks, and, you know, actually, I'm eliminating another week from after, so adding three weeks is not that big. Again, not a huge issue, in my opinion, but, I mean, again...
If we give it, we can't take it back. Can we not give them two and if people are saying, "Hey, it's not enough time"? But once you give somebody three months and then you need to come back and say you can only have two, it's just negative.
But I think we need to be careful. I don't think the three months hurts us that bad, because the reality is, we're not enforcing it anyway.
But we need to.
We're trying, but it's a very slippery slope touching political signs.
Well, part of not being able to enforce it is we haven't had staff.
So, another thing to think about is, you know, when candidates are running campaigns, you know, there, there's a lot of different schedules that they have to meet. And having, adding another schedule that they have to consider, it's a cost to the various campaigns. So, we're actually putting a burden on a lot of the candidates that are strapped for cash. So, I think it's, I think just giving that latitude is, and having them not think about it, and having them display signs right after they file papers, I think that, that makes sense.
There's a current motion.
There's a motion. I second the motion.
Vocal?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Can we repeat the motion, please?
As I understand it, you're accepting staff's recommendation with some changes to allow three signs during election periods, which are defined as three months before and one week after any federal, state, or local election. And any other time of the year, one sign with the same size limit.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Nay.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Moving on to six point three, a cannabis ordinance update. This will be interesting.
So, thank you Chairs, Air, Chair and Commissioners. I'm going to talk about the proposed cannabis ordinance update today. Just by way of history, currently the cannabis regulations are housed in Chapter six point three six of the municipal code. And they contain provisions which prohibit all commercial cannabis activity and regulate some cultivation for personal use. The last time that these regulations were updated was by an urgency ordinance in October of 2016 in response to the anticipated voter approval of Proposition sixty-four. Those provisions which were set forth in the urgency ordinance are set to expire this October, October twenty-sixth. So the proposed ordinance that's before you for consideration today, while it contains a number of provisions, the primary purpose is to update the code and incorporate provisions relating to cannabis cultivation for personal use that are consistent with the new state law and new state regulations surrounding cannabis. So within the proposed ordinance, the proposed ordinance would maintain the existing prohibition on all commercial cannabis facilities and deliveries within the city. So that is currently in effect under the urgency ordinance, and that will remain in effect under the proposed ordinance. So the cannabis facilities and deliveries within the city would still be prohibited. The proposed ordinance does incorporate, however, the provisions relating to cannabis cultivation for personal use, which is consistent with state law. Now, state law requires that cities allow, you know, allow residents to cultivate six cannabis plants for personal use at a private residence. The city may impose reasonable regulations regarding cultivation to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Some of those types of regulations that we've included in the proposed ordinance include age restrictions as to who may do any kind of cultivation activities that's restricted at twenty-one years of age or above. Limiting the use of gas products in the cultivation of cannabis, which can be somewhat dangerous if used improperly, as well as limiting and regulating the use of certain lighting for indoor cultivation. The proposed ordinance would also eliminate the existing permit requirement that is included under the urgency ordinance. The reason for that is that no permits under the urgency ordinance have been actually issued. And there is, the existing permit requirement under the urgency ordinance is somewhat questionable legally. There's currently a lawsuit by the ACLU pending. So it would be staff's recommendation to eliminate that permit requirement and simply allow the cultivation on private property in accordance with state law. The other main objective of the proposed ordinance is to relocate it to the zoning code. Currently, it's located in Title VI of the city code, which contains regulations concerning city businesses. We would be moving the, these regulations to the zoning code because it pertains to the use of land, particularly the cultivation on residential property and the restrictions of commercial use. Lastly, we're updating just general terminology within the code. For example, cannabis versus marijuana. We're also updating citations and references to state law, which have been updated since the passage of Proposition sixty-four and the enactment of regulations subsequent to that passage. So it's staff's recommendation to, the commission recommends that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance and then be renumbering Chapter six point three six of the city code and relocate that to the zoning code regarding cannabis facilities cultivation and deliveries. Some options, you know, you recommend approval as recommended by staff. Or if the council has concerns or would like to make some modifications, continue the item and direct staff to make revisions. Of course, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. With that open public hearing, was there any speaker cards still for this item?
No, we have not received any.
With that, I'll close public hearing and open up discussions. Are there any questions for staff?
In ordinance, does it regulate if those six plants could be grown indoors or outdoors, or either one?
Either one under the ordinance.
Okay, and there's no restrictions on height of wall around the property or anything like that?
Code limits the height of a wall around a residential property of six feet.
Okay, but, I mean, if they grow six plants in their backyard, do we require them to have a six-foot wall or...?
I thought we prohibited outdoor growth. We only restricted it to indoor growth.
No, you just said it's either one.
That was the ordinance, to my knowledge, from before that we're updating now, right?
Excuse me, one second. I apologize, I misspoke. The cultivation occur, may occur in a private residence or an accessory structure belonging to and under the control of the occupants of the residence, fully enclosed and secured. So there would be no outdoor growth.
Okay, so there is no outdoor cultivation?
Correct, yeah, I apologize for that.
So I think we need to word that ordinance clear to specifically say no outdoor cultivation.
The ordinance does, it was my misunderstanding or my...
Well, I had concern about that too, because I read that talking about indoor, but it didn't say anything about no outdoor cultivation.
Yeah, because you didn't totally misstate it. It says in here that only plants in excess of twenty-eight point five grams must kept in the fully enclosed, secured private residency. So it is a little bit confusing.
We could add an indoor requirement if the commission was...
If that's what we're trying to achieve, then I think we need to add that.
So from Mr. Chair, so from what Commissioner Charleston was saying, it sounds like we're allowing you to germinate them outside and then they move inside when they get over a certain size, is that...?
Well, I, I'm, I would just, I've read that before, the ordinance. And so I've, I was operating off of that information that we're updating an ordinance that already restricts outdoor growth and only allows for indoor growth. And so that the only major change in this ordinance that we're updating is that we're eliminating the permit requirement, so...
Correct.
Okay, so...
The current, the current ordinance does, yeah, it prohibits outdoor growth. The urgency ordinance prohibits outdoor growth and allows indoor growth with a permit. Here, we're intending to eliminate just the permit and maintain the indoor growth. But if we want to make that, if the commission would feel better about making that more explicit, we can add that language.
I think we need to because, before it was medical marijuana use, now it's recreational use.
I mean, I have no issues on that. I just, because I thought it was already restricted. So if we need to clarify that, then, I mean, by all means.
I'd like to see it.
What's the state, along with Chair Feng, is, isn't this more to modify some of our language since it passed on a statewide basis? So we need our ordinance to at least mirror what the state law?
With regard to, it needs to definitely mirror the requirement that a city allow some, the at least six plants for personal cultivation. The city can do some reasonable regulations regarding, you know, as I had mentioned, kind of lighting and things like that regarding that cultivation. And one of those things could be to bring it indoors.
When we make a regulation, we have to enforce it. I don't, I don't know that our city needs to enforce any more than we already have. I mean, the state has their law and I'm good with, I don't think we need any more regulations.
And just to clarify Commercial Charleston's kind of question, the, that last sentence of paragraph one, that's talking about the kind of ultimate cannabis that is produced from the grow. So the product that would be ultimately used, not necessarily the plant. That that needs to also be under, you know, kind of secured by being a private residence or an accessory structure if it's over a certain amount. But the existing language of the proposed ordinance does say that, you know, it can only occur in a private residence or accessory structure belonging to and under the control of the occupants of such residence that is fully enclosed and secured against unauthorized entry. So that does restrict the grow to indoors and would not permit outdoor growth.
I actually have one question for Chad there. I've noticed Harupa has a lot of dispensaries. And they have, they've passed ordinances just like us in closing them down when this occurred. They're shutting down the regular ones that are just dispensaries. I've noticed that a lot of the dispensaries are now changing their business sort of structure. They're more a religious establishment now. There are a few of those where, you know, they advertise it's a parish of this or it's that. But they're selling marijuana or cannabis, whatever you want to call it. So is that a way to get around Harupa's ordinances?
I haven't, I'm not familiar with those situations in general. I have heard of that happening. And I do know that some cities are kind of challenging that. I'm not sure of what the outcome is. I don't believe that would have, you know, you would have a strong legal basis for...
Because there, some of them do, I mean, admittedly, I know quite a few people in this industry and I voted for the emergency ordinance when they happened because the city's not ready for it and the residents don't want it. But in understanding what they're doing and, they're getting ministers, they're getting pastors as part of their, and they're having Bible studies, so to speak, on Sundays and service. And so there's, it looks like a religious establishment. So I'm concerned that they might use this to get around certain ordinances in the future. So that's just my sort of observation.
It's certainly a possibility and, you know, that would be something that, you know, we would have to address through code enforcement in a way to try to enforce the regulations. I'm not familiar with any existing precedent that is addressing that type of situation. But given that it is, that type of argument is starting to prop up, I wouldn't be surprised if we get some direction from the courts on that soon.
Yeah, just keep an eye on that. And if you need an address, I'll give it to you too. I mean, we can all go attend their advertised Bible studies on Wednesdays and service on Sundays at ten. I don't know, that's just a concern of mine because people like to get around things. Is there a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Could we add that extra phrase in there that it's not to be cultivated outdoors in your proposal?
We can if you think it's necessary. To me, it looks like it's clearly written.
It's pretty clear.
I don't think it's necessary from a legal perspective. I don't think we would have any problem ensuring that an outdoor growth would not be permitted under this, the language of this ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Vocal?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
We have a Sequo update presentation, huh? Item number seven. Do I have a statement to read? Do I have anything to read off of this?
No, sir, you don't. I'll just kick this off by saying we're very pleased tonight to have Bob Stark, one of our Sequo superstars here, to give you an update on some rather important changes that are coming down in the way the state is directing us to look at environmental impacts. Bob is an expert on the stuff. He's the guy I go to when I've got a really interesting Sequo question and he invariably has the answer, so looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful introduction, Eric. Good evening, Commissioners. Time to ratchet up the excitement level tonight and talk about Sequo. This is the California Environmental Quality Act for those in the audience who might not be familiar with that term. But yes, changes are afoot in the Sequo world. And so I wanted to give you just kind of a high-level sneak preview of what's coming just to kind of give you a general familiarity with where we're headed and highlight some of the key, hopefully, improvements to the guidelines. So this is the biggest update to the Sequo guidelines in about twenty years. So it's, you know, from year to year, we usually see little strikeout in other lines and little minor changes to the guidelines and people like me get all excited. But it's nothing major. This is fairly major. This has been going on now for gosh, seven plus years when we started considering these changes. And we're almost to the finish line. There's a final comment period that's open now and closes in two days. So if you hear anything that is raising flags in your head or raising eyebrows or is actually still a chance to make the cities or individual comments known to the state before they consider a final adoption. There's also a grace period built in. So once the updated guidelines are formally put into law, I'll go down to the bottom of this slide and kind of see the general process that goes to the Office of the Administrative Law and blah, blah, blah. But once it gets adopted, July first, twenty twenty, and so like the state has said, we shall implement some of these new rules by that time. So there's plenty of time for the city to be able to update the Sequo guidelines and implement these new guidelines. The update to the guidelines covers three general areas that I've highlighted here. There's procedural improvements addressing things like regulations, standard regulations. And often, you know, we'll prepare an EIR and we'll say, well, gosh, the state already is now mandating that solar panels be put on every roof, you know. So things like that that we can point to. Streamlining, that's always a really attractive term in the Sequo world that I see heads being shaken here. What's streamlining?
Yeah, right.
But this is going to highlight what those streamlined provisions are and make them, they attempt to make them more readily accessible and useful locally to agencies. What I'm going to focus on primarily tonight is what we refer to as Appendix G of the guidelines. That's that initial study checklist that you're probably familiar with. So that's what you're going to be exposed to on a day-to-day basis in your position is reviewing EIRs and looking at all the impacts. And so that's what I intend to focus on this evening. There are some more substantive improvements that we'll visit in that checklist, as well as some technical improvements that all kind of swell up from case law. So there's been, you know, court case after court case. And when the Supreme Court puts a decision... a decision forth, an opinion that this is how Sequa is to be interpreted on this issue, that is now being brought into the, into the guidelines themselves. So it's, it's very clear. And one of those, reverse Sequa was a term that we got excited about. There was a Supreme Court decision where the judge said, we're only supposed to be looking at the impacts of the project on the environment. We shouldn't be looking at the impacts of the environment on a future project. That was a big, you know, thing about it. Are exposing people in this new development to excessive noise? You don't care from a Sequa standpoint and certainly there's going to be things that are very important when you're deliberating on a project, but this is really trying to ratchet in what is to be considered under Sequa. Again, what I always like to preach is, you know, Sequa is really intended to be just one layer of project consideration, of approval consideration. But so often, as it turns out in reality, you know, folks have little latched on Sequa and it's almost like Sequa itself becomes the entire project. And so we always try to keep that distinction. If you're so interested, if you can't sleep, I mean, suffering from insomnia, I do have the website on there, all of this, I just kind of distilled from all the state's advisory, technical advisories and other documents. So if you're interested and digging into it in more detail, you are welcome to. So a lot of redundancy in the checklist currently, we'll see some of that. Court decisions I mentioned, there's some new questions under the checklist that address things like energy, VMT, have you heard of that term? Vehicle miles per hour. So this is the one that most agencies are really focused in on now, is this change in how we are going to measure whether traffic is resulting in an impact on the environment or not. I'll get into that a little more in a second. Wildfires is being added as a new topic on the checklist. Something to stress here, the state wants to be sure, is that this appendix in the guidelines that has a sample checklist, it was always intended just to be that, a sample for cities to take and modify to make it their own based on environmental conditions and issues in that jurisdiction. The reality is, I think, probably 99% of cities and agencies throughout the state use verbatim the checklist as presented in the guidelines. But that is something we consider, we can consider moving forward. So these are all the different environmental topics that are currently on the checklist and you can see the strikeout underline are the, the changes that would be there. So I mentioned wildfire, transportation, not traffic anymore because again, we're, we're moving away from being concerned about vehicle delay and more concerned about how far are those cars driving and what are the emissions associated with that. Most of these changes all kind of trickle down from state policy related to climate change. And so you can see that reverberating throughout the change. So I've, I've already broken the cardinal rule here of putting way too many words on a slide, but I wanted to include this in case you wanted to take this back with you and then check it out. But what I've done is I've, I've highlighted in yellow there that the main changes that I wanted to attract your attention to. So here we'll start with aesthetics, public views. So there used to be this debate about, well, is someone's view from their own house, is that considered a, you know, and I think it's been readily assumed throughout the industry that really Sequa is only concerned with views from public areas. You know, if you're on a, a public bike path, if you're out on the street or there are going to be scenic vistas that are going to be obstructed, things like that. People really don't have a right to a view from their personal property. Again, this is something that always evokes a lot of passion during public discourse and it's something that every decision maker has, has to consider, but they've added that in to be very clear that this is, falls outside of the Sequa framework. Cultural resources, nothing too new here, but the one thing that was removed that all archaeologists all through the state are, are jumping up and cheering about is paleontology has been removed from this section and placed or relegated to, to another section in geology. As, as any archaeologist will tell you, we don't do fossils, we don't do dinosaurs, we do people history. So they were always kind of have a little problem with paleontology being lumped into this area. Energy, so this is an interesting one. Energy has never been on the Sequa checklist, yet buried in the back of Sequa in Appendix F. There are requirements to address energy conservation and specifically whether a project would result in inefficient or wasteful use of energy. So that is now just for ease of, of process and being brought out of the appendix to its rightful place in the actual Sequa checklist. Every time I, I present this change, it's, I put the graphic on there. What exactly is wasteful, inefficient or unnecessary consumption of energy? That's saying, there's no quantitative standard that we're going to be comparing this to. And so the answer is it's really up to each agency. You are giving great deference in deciding what is wasteful and what is not wasteful. So that's something to, to keep in mind moving forward. Geology and soils, I've mentioned paleontology that appears now at the bottom of this section. The top item there, a, it seems like a fairly minor revision, but it's, it relates back to that impact of the environment on the project versus what we're supposed to be looking at, which is the project's effect on the environment. And so that's where that language, there was actually a language in, in the guidelines that said, for example, if a project is astride an earthquake fault, that would expose future residents to harm from potential earthquakes. And the judge said, no, 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 that, that needs to be stricken immediately because that is looking at the impact of the environment on that project. We're not to be concerned with that. We're only looking at situations where this project is causing a problem or exacerbating an existing condition. Land use and planning, this kind of just addressed some of the redundancy issues I had mentioned in the beginning. There was item C here that talked about conflicts with habitat conservation plans. So that's a plan, we're talking about whether the project consists of plants or not. But what happens here is here we are in the land use section, talking about habitat plans, and then you're in the biology section, talking about habitat plans and referring back and forth. It was just messy. And so that's been taken out and put in its rightful place in the biology section. Noise, a lot of the same treatment here. This was, there's just a lot of redundancy. Would the project result in increased noise in an area where there's an airport, where there's a private air strip or there's a, can we just say with increased noise, is that adequate? That's what this is getting at here. So it crossed out a lot of these other items that were just very redundant. Population and housing, this is an issue, especially when we talk about a project's potential to result in growth inducement and whether that is a good thing or a bad thing. Do we need to defend against saying that we're reducing growth? I mean, I don't think growth is inherently bad, it's just impacts of that growth that we're to be concerned with. So here they've just, you know, clarified that we're really talking about unplanned growth. This is something that wasn't accounted for in general plan and not prepared for it. And, and you know, I always like to say, again, so what? If it was planned or unplanned, people themselves are not the problem, it's what are the resulting impacts from that? More cars on the road, increased vehicle miles traveled, air quality. Regardless, that's what is being amended in this section. Wildfires, an entirely new section. This isn't to say that we didn't have to address wildfire before, it was just kind of spread throughout different sections. In the public services section, we talked about impacts of the fire department. In the hazards section, there was a question about wildfire hazards. So this is being brought all together now. Wildfires is certainly is a very, I almost said hot topic, I guess I did say hot topic. It's a, it's a big deal. We live in a very fire-prone part of our state and so it's something that we need to, to be careful in how we're addressing. However, we look at the top here, the, the introduction to this question says, if the project is located near a state responsibility area or land classified as very high fire hazard severity zone. We took a look with the help of my staff over here and pulled the, the mapping from the state for the city of Eastvale. We don't have any means in this, in the city. There's no responsibility areas, there's no very high fire hazard designated areas in the city. Near one? Possible. You know, a couple of miles away, there are some on the map. I don't think, you know, we'll, we'll have to delve into this section too much moving forward in, in the city. And it may be something where we consider modifying the city's checklist to, to away with this or maybe just, you know, condense it into if you're near these specific areas, then you need to give this some consideration. But, you know, things to be thinking about. And finally, transportation. So we're not calling it traffic anymore, so it's going to take a while to get used to. But this has really been the focus of, of many agencies in, in how to deal with this. So there's a lot of language that's been stricken here. You can see what it's been replaced with. Would the project conflict with a program plan or policy addressing the circulation system? So that is a, you know, all-inclusive. We're talking about transit, bikes, pedestrians. It's moving more of the attention and focus on moving people as opposed to just moving cars and making sure that every project is accommodating the movement of cars. So that's really the change. And the change there is, results in a different metric now. So level of service, you may be familiar with that, it's rated A through F, you know, whatever intersection on Amber is operating at a D, how do we fix that to change the signal timing or put in a new left turn lane pocket so we can make sure the cars can still keep moving at the conditions they're moving now? Not concerned with that in Sequa anymore. City may certainly be concerned with traffic flow and parking and any other number of issues, but from a Sequa standpoint, we're going to be moving to this vehicle miles travel metric, which again is looking at not how many cars, but how far are those trips? And that's all to discourage sprawl. So if you have a subdivision that's out the loonies, as you might imagine, all of those people that are going to be living there are going to have to drive much longer distances to get to Costco, to get to church, to get to school, wherever they need to drive to on a daily basis. So we're going to be taking a look at that and how do we do that? There's a couple of things. So we have to look at these, what are going to be the significance threshold? Again, a lot of text here, you don't need to try to read it, but this just says, as I stated, a project's effect on automobile delay shall not constitute a significant environmental impact. Again, it can be an impact discussed elsewhere within deliberations, but not within the Sequa framework. It's also saying generally, so it's a guidance here, but projects within a half mile of a transit stop, a high-quality transit stop, and that could be light rail, that could be a bus station, that could be, you know, a disruling grid access to transit, that could be presumed right off the bat to, to result in a less insignificant impact. Giving people access that's going to take them out of their cars. And so that's kind of the type of planning that Sacramento wants to see throughout the state to lower our greenhouse gas emissions and meet all of those targets on, on those reductions. But bringing it down to a more micro level here, they've given some recommendations on what you might be thinking about for residential and office projects versus retail. And OPR, which is the governor's office of planning and research, they have said, look, if you're looking at a current happen to basis, the project results in vehicle miles traveled that is 15% below the average in the city, if you will, that might be a good threshold to look at. For retail, if there's any net increase in vehicle miles traveled, that may indicate a significant transportation impact. So some, some thresholds that the city's going to need to flesh out in order to, to determine what makes sense for Eastvale. And we'll do base that on some traffic modeling and looking at, you know, what trips look like currently in the city. Again, I mentioned, I think, all of this before and where this is coming from and then more importantly, you know, the kind of deadline is still a ways off, but these things tend to sneak up on us, so consider this your, your warning flag that it's coming and, and lots of work will be done to make sure that we're, we're processing all of our, our Sequa projects in line with, with the updated state law. With that, I thank you, unless you want to dig into the 20-plus backup slides I have, but I'm guessing not. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them and I'm always around too, so you can call any one of your planning team anytime and then we're happy to do whatever information we get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Lee? I know, he asked a question.
Yes. Transportation.
Of course. So, of course, SB 743 is, is, is the key element. I know WR COG is kind of looking into doing, looking into that 15% threshold for us for most of our Western Riverside County regions and cities. But I guess this is more for like staff. Question is, are we still going to keep the LOS analysis and require developers to do the LOS analysis? And are we going to tie them to LOS and, and some of the fees that we associate with the, with their developments? Are we going to still keep that or are we going to, are we going to go to the VMT route and start looking at the VMT reduction and the impact of the VMT?
My, my guess is it is involved with certainly, you know, traffic infringement. I guess exactly, there's going to be full approaches for some time. One of the reasons is we have a general plan, circulation element, and we need, projects must be consistent with the general plan. And so if general plan requires a certain level of service, that may not be part of EIR, but it may be something that a traffic study needs to, to look at in order to know what improvements need to be made. The other points that just, tump, tump fees, if these, you know, all of these impact fees and the programs, the capital improvement programs where fair share payments from projects filter in, you know, how would that change? Or will there be new fee programs that would address the vehicle miles of travel issue? And does that mean, you know, funds that get to, and I've seen a lot of presentations lately in San Diego where I live, Sandag, just produce PowerPoints on what folks are doing statewide to create similar types of fee programs, but they go towards shuttle programs, building bike lanes, that, that type of thing that gets people out of their cars and reduces those issues.
Yeah, well, on the second point, I think you'd probably eventually see similar fee programs, but funding a different set of projects. So instead of being so heavily vehicle-focused, part of that tump fee or a bigger part might go to bicycle or transit or light rail or something like that. And, and on the other issue, yeah, I think we'll probably end up with a two-forked or a two-pronged approach to looking at transportation impacts. We do have a general plan, as Bob pointed out, that requires a certain level of service. So I think we'll continue to do that analysis even if it's not in the EIR. I'll just offer that, you know, worked in places where there is no Sequa, but they still get traffic studies and they still require roads to get built based on level of service standard. So I, I think you'll still see that, but we're clearly, at least the state is trying to push us all into a broader view of transportation and not just congestion.
Okay. So when, when are we doing our general plan update next?
We don't have one scheduled except for the housing element, which is coming up in a couple of years. So that's something that, you know, we can, we can amend it at any time, but for the moment, we don't have any plans to start messing with that part of the plan.
Okay. Because I, I think, again, if we're doing a general plan update, there's slew of Sequa guidelines that have changed, that we have to address SB 32, local hazard mitigation plans and climate adaptations and so forth, all those issues that come up when we're doing the general plan update. So maybe delaying the general plan update a little later might be a wise decision at this point.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely, I can tell you, a cottage industry out there right now with, you know, primarily transportation consulting firms that are going out and working with, with agencies and giving them sort of a packaged approach. If you will, we'll update your guidelines, your thresholds, we'll also update your circulation element and you can kind of, you know, pick and choose, we just want to do this for now and have an interim threshold and ordinance or do we want to do the full boat? So it's, yeah, it's definitely something that's to start thinking about.
I have a question. Tell me if I'm dumb, just let me know. It's in regards to the thresholds. I know we're talking about greenhouse gas emissions, I mean, the whole cap and trade thing, but is there anything, and maybe this is a legal question? but is there anything, and maybe this is a legal question. Let's say if a certain business comes in and they have a good HR policy where they allow fifty percent of their employees to telework or telecommute. That would essentially reduce the VMTs and greenhouse gas. Is that, does that be?
Definitely, definitely factors in. And, you know, the tough thing is trying to prove that, because you never predict. And so, you know, companies can't mandate, as far as I know, that you must travel to work on foot or use our shuttle. People are still free to use their cars. So I, you know, the approach has always been, if there is a good argument to be made that it's gonna be substantiated and it's defensible, and the errors of the traffic report or GHU report that the city feels confident, then yeah, we can put some of those assumptions into the model that will then, you know, spit out lower greenhouse gas emissions than it would otherwise. They just need to be careful, you can't, you know, say, oh, this, this, you know, Costco is going to have a shuttle service for their employees, and so we've estimated that seventy-five percent of all the employees at Costco would use a shuttle. We just know that's not reality. As long as you're careful about that, that certainly doesn't matter.
I guess, I mean, more specifically towards the employment policy of telework and telecommuting. If that's part of their official HR policy, that's more of a, I mean, you can rely on that data more than, let's say, a shuttle, because then people will be employed at a, maybe, you know, a closer establishment or from their homes, and they would reduce all that.
So Bob, I think an example of that would be like up in the Bay Area, Google and Facebook have agreements with the communities that they're gonna only allow so many trips onto their campus every day. And so Google and Facebook are incentivized to get their employees there some other way than by car. And so they bring them in by shuttle, by train, by bike, by bus, by walking, by carpooling, by whatever. And they're documenting and monitoring that to make sure that they're keeping their thresholds for traffic. They're also not building huge parking structures, and they have probably ten, probably a hundred times the amount of employees in their center as we do in anywhere in Eastville, right? So, you know, there are ways to move people in new and different ways. And I think part of what is occurring with the Sequo that Bob is sharing is, Sequo is trying to help communities focus on, if you build communities for people in place, you'll get people in place. If you build it for cars and traffic, you're gonna get cars and traffic. And so if you build your roadways and your transportation and your land uses solely for people to get around in cars, you're gonna get cars, traffic, and congestion. And so if you experience that in a community, it's not a, it's, in some cases, we often will get complaints at the city of Eastville. It's take, I'm only able to go forty-five miles an hour on a roadway in Eastville, or fifty-five, or I had to slow down to fifty-five on a roadway in Eastville. And we say, okay, and I hit one red light going across Limonite or whatever. But then I said, well, what time are you going to work in the morning? And I said, the freeway has a parking lot. And I'm like, so you're racing to the parking lot, right? So how do we, how do we do that? But we also have had some pretty significant collisions due to high speeds as well as our big wide roadways in Eastville recently. And so we also want to work on how do we create our roadways to be safe or safer so that people can get around and they don't, because I was at a planning commissioner city council meeting, not in the too distant future, we had one speaker describe a street that said, man, this roadway is always congested or blocked. And the next speaker said, this roadway is a raceway, right? Well, for fifteen or twenty minutes or thirty minutes of the day, it might be congested. But for the other twenty-three hours a day, they're having people do donuts out on the roadway and speed. And so we were having the same person describe the same roadway in two different settings. And part of it is, how are we using our roadways and for what part of the day are we using our roadways to help people get to their destinations? But for a place like Eastville, where we don't have a good homes-to-jobs balance, and a lot of people leave our community for work, you know, if we were to bring more jobs to Eastville, we're keeping people in Eastville rather than forcing them to leave for work, right? And so there are opportunities with like the LEO specific plan to reduce our VMT in our community because we're giving them things that are closer to the community, so they don't have to drive as far. And so there are great things that are happening in that spectrum as well. So I think this VMT analysis could prove very beneficial for Eastville in a number of ways.
So I guess basically, state wants us to put homes on top of Amazon so that the workers can actually go down and work. But that's essentially what the state wants us to, wants us doing. Question on the, so speaking of quantifying the VMT, I know WR cog was kind of thinking of doing and reviving their RIVTAM model. Again, I don't know what the status is on that one. Do you guys know if they've actually started working on the RIVTAM update, or?
I do not. Is WR cog updating the RIVTAM model?
I've asked that question, I haven't heard anything back on it.
I can certainly look into it and report back on what they're up to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to item seven point two, update on the LEO master plan. Yay.
We'll keep this brief. But in keeping with our educational note tonight, this was suggested, I think, a meeting or two ago, 'cause there are a number of commissioners who are here tonight who weren't around when this all happened. So we thought it would just be good to kind of give you an update on sort of where we are and a little bit of background on how we got there. So the LEO master plan, as you probably know, but it won't assume anything, it's a plan that the city adopted in December of twenty seventeen for an approximately hundred and sixty acre property that we call a LEO property. It's intended to be really the major mixed-use retail, office, housing, civic project in Eastville. And it's a project not only of local scale, but of regional scale, just in terms of the size of it. So, as I mentioned, in twenty seventeen, the council took a number of actions. They amended the general plan. So we're putting, we're getting that amended document up on the website, it's taken a little while. But we added the LEO property as a policy. So there's a new policy in the general plan that describes this. We amended the land use map. We amended the zoning code. We added a chapter called master plans, 'cause we came up with this new kind of planning document that ultimately became the LEO master plan. And we amended the zoning map. So if you look on the updated zoning map, you'll just see a big square that says the LEO master plan. And we adopted the master plan itself. So real briefly, this is the LEO property. It's the area that, well, over here. This is now KB's lodge. This is a slightly old aerial, but this is the LEO property. So it's bounded on the south by Limonite, Hamner on the east, Fifty-Eighth on the north, and Scholar on the west. So hundred and sixty acres, that's a quarter section in kind of land use or land area terms. It's a big piece of property, the biggest piece of property left in town. And right at the corner, as we say, of Maine and Maine. So here's just another view, a little more recently. One thing to note that you can see on the picture here, if you look closely, are the cows. This is one of only two dairies still in operation in Eastville. And there's, if you drive by, you'll see they still have the cows out there. So again, up here, kind of in the background, that's Fifty-Eighth and Scholar. So another view here, Fifty-Eighth again in the background. And a little bit of history going back beyond twenty seventeen, and actually going a little bit beyond this slide. In twenty twelve, when we adopted the first Eastville general plan, we had a policy in the land use chapter of that plan that said there are three areas in town where we wanna do more detailed planning, but we just didn't wanna get into it with that general plan effort. This is one of them. The other two were Swan Lake, which we haven't gotten to yet, and Chandler, where we adopted the vision plan a couple of years ago. So we're kind of ticking those areas off. But this is one of those three areas. So in response to that, then the council told us in twenty thirteen, let's go and do a master plan for the LEO property. All this work was city-funded. We originally started with a four-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, and that was really viewed as a, as an economic development investment. And there still is a possibility to recoup that cost as development occurs within the property. But at least initially, it was viewed as an investment to bring this kind of project to town. And we'll ultimately get that money back, you know, many times over. So in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we had public outreach, we did workshops with the commission and council. So some of you remember those when you were around. Getting into twenty fourteen and fifteen, we prepared the document that we ultimately adopted. We had an environmental impact report written and circulated for public review. And in September of twenty fifteen, and again, some of you were here on the dais, the plan commission recommended approval of the master plan. For the next couple of years, the city decided to wait and not adopt the plan while the property owner continued to negotiate with developers and waited until the council had a good feeling that they were at least fairly close to identifying a developer for the property. And by the end of last year, they had reached that point. We put it back on the agenda, and the city council certified the EIR and adopted the master plan and there's other changes to the zoning code and the general plan. So the master plan itself is a fairly brief document. If you've ever had a chance to read it, if you need a copy of it, by all means, just stop by City Hall and we can give you a printed copy. It's available on the website, there's also a, it's on the city's website. There's also its own website, leo-specificplan.com, you can download the whole thing there too. So the master plan seeks to do a few basic things. One is it defines the level of quality of development that we wanna take place. And I'll show you some slides about how it does that. It provides what we call a land use program, but not a map. I'll talk about that. It talks about a stage planning process where there's more follow-on work, actually a lot more follow-on work after the master plan before anything starts to get built out there. And it talks about phasing, to do a couple of things. There is some major infrastructure that needs to get built, the exterior roadways for one thing. And the other important component to that was getting the lifestyle center, which is the retail component of it, built not first, but almost first. What we didn't wanna end up with was the proverbial donut hole, where everything else gets built around what you really want, and then that piece never gets built. So there's a phasing program that requires that. And all of this was worked out with the property owner at the time. So they were fully on board with it. All the potential developers that we've spoken to, or at least most of them, they've all read this and they're all ready to abide by these rules. So let's talk about level of quality. The master plan, the second chapter where we define this, is very heavy on images and photographs of the kinds of things that we're looking for. So there, you'll find in there's a whole lot of images, it's broken down into different categories. One example here is public spaces and starting to define the, not in specific terms, but in general terms, this is what we're looking for, the level of amenity, the kinds of, you know, tree grates and architectural detailing, landscape, the care with which some of these other projects have been put together. And a lot of these images are from, or some of them are from Victoria Gardens, they're from Americana Grand, some of the other, you know, kind of landmark commercial centers that you're probably aware of, up in San Jose and so on. This is a whole section on water features. That was one thing that was very important to Mr. Brad Liel, who has, you know, since passed on, but that was very important to him. And there's actually a requirement in the plan to put a signature water feature at the corner of Hamner and Limonite, and that was really part of his vision for the property. Landscaping, and, you know, as you get into it, you'll see, it's easier to see when you've had the document in front of you, you know, you'll see a lot of little details in here, again, that just kind of illustrate the level of care and the attention to those kinds of, you know, little features, the little things that make a great project. The land use program is the next major chapter, this is in chapter three. And it establishes, as it says up on the slide, a range of uses for the property. Breaks it down into different categories, and we'll get into those in a second. Now, it's the responsibility of the ultimate developer, whoever that is, to come up with the map, the detailed land use plan, which is not in here. The mix of uses that are on that plan need to fall within the parameters that are in here, unless the council decides to amend this master plan. That's gonna be determined by the developer, what he or she thinks is gonna work. Obviously, in the context of the market, all that needs to get approved by the city. So all this, after this has been approved now, there's a whole separate approval process once those detailed plans come in. So these are the land use categories, and the first one that we list is a lifestyle retail center. So again, if you think of something like Victoria Gardens, to a lesser extent, the shops at Chino Hills, that's the kind of thing we're talking about. There's a required range in here, it has to be at least three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand square feet. And that's about as big as the shops at Chino Hills, up to one-point-three million. And the upper number, you know, may or may not be achievable. That was something that was frankly, was very important to Mr. Liel. He had a vision for that, and he wanted to make sure that number was in the plan. So that's part of the background about why that's there. And all of these numbers, by the way, or all these square footage numbers, were considered in the EIR. So even if we go up to this much retail, the EIR examined that. Next category is general commercial, up to two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand square feet. So we've already got Costco, but whatever that other large retailer is, that category accommodates that. There's no minimum here. So you'll see in some of these, there's minimums and maximums, others there aren't. You can build up to nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet of office and medical development. Up to four-hundred-and-fifty rooms of hotels, could be one hotel, could be several. There is an allowance in there for a civic center, it's not a required component, but it's certainly something we're gonna talk with the ultimate developer about. We think they will recognize the advantage of having a vibrant civic center in their project as something that builds traffic, builds activity, brings people to the project. So we're certainly gonna be working with them to build that into the project. And then we get into some residential categories. The intent here, if you look at the numbers in terms of density, the first category goes from fourteen to twenty-one dwelling units per acre. So that's kind of a townhome apartment-type density. There's no requirement for any of this, but we do see that this is gonna happen in here, partly because the housing helps make the rest of the project pencil out better. The next category up then is twenty-two to forty. And here's where you get into, again, a requirement. You have to build it, whatever that land use plan looks like, it has to have an accommodation for at least five-hundred units at this density, up to six-hundred-and-sixty. Those numbers weren't pulled out of thin air, those came out of the housing element and the requirement that we had. And by way of a little bit of background, when we adopted the Goodman Center specific plan, it replaced a residential specific plan that had these high-density units in it. So we were looking for another place in town to put those units, and we thought, well, this looks like a very good place. 'Cause again, we're trying to build a more intensive downtown project here. And that's the other reason we go back to the fourteen to twenty-one, that we don't go below that density. 'Cause the intent was not to build more single-family homes, but to build a more compact urban-type project. And then there's other community features that are talked about in the master plan, open space, parks, again, that major entry feature at Hamner and Limonite. And again, when we're looking at a project like this, we're gonna be looking at this carefully to make, to see that these areas are strategically placed, that we have corridors and parkways that link different parts of the project together. It really isn't, it's gonna be designed, we'll make sure of that, you know, holistically, with all of these things kept in mind. It's not gonna be a little piece of this separated by a road from another piece of that. Then we get into stage processing and phasing, and that's another very important part. There's basically, well, if you want to talk about two basic stages of planning, and then you get into development plans, which you're all familiar with, that's the major development plan review process and then building permits. But the two stages in the plan, stage one is the master plan itself, so we're done with that. We've checked off that box. Then we get into stage two, and that's where we get into the land use plan, the architectural style or styles, any other project-wide development criteria that we need to make that project work. That's when the developer can propose those. work, that's when the developer can propose those kinds of changes, and we get infrastructure plans. So if you think of the typical kind of bubble map, the retail goes here, the housing goes here, those bubbles start to define where the roadways are going to go, the roadways define where the infrastructure goes, because most of that stuff goes in the roadway, so all of those things really, again, are, the intent is to make sure that they're all planned together at once, and that we're not just piecemealing a little piece of it at a time. So once you're done with that, and again, that all goes through a whole city review process, back to the city council, you know, through this planning commission, and then back to the city council to get that all adopted, then developers can bring in development plans and then ultimately move on to building permits. So some of the key pieces of phasing, as written in the plan, we allow up to 40 acres of non-lifestyle center stuff to get developed in the first phase. Also in the first phase, those perimeter roadways, all the, all four, 58th, Hamner, Lymanite, and Scholar, all get widened to their full width. That's a major investment on the part of the developer. And again, the intent was, behind the 40 acre, was to allow that development, probably residential, to prime the pump, to help them finance that infrastructure. But once you're done with that, and there's no requirement that you do this, you can build a lifestyle center first if you want, but if they decide to go with this phasing, once you're done with that 40 acres, then the lifestyle center has to get built. And we'll definitely be working with them to make sure that we're not setting up a project that stops at 40 acres, it's going to continue all the way through. And then after that happens, everything else can take place, so as long as we get that minimum increment. And those, again, no reason why they couldn't, if they intend to build a larger lifestyle center, that they couldn't build that whole thing in the first phase, or build 40 acres of other and then the entire lifestyle center, these are just the, the first is a maximum of other stuff and the second is a minimum of the lifestyle center, but you could build more in that second phase. So I mentioned that we did a comprehensive environmental impact report, we looked at a whole category of issues, highlighted on here, transportation, air quality, noise, are the three that we determined could not be mitigated to a level of less than significant, so the city adopted a statement of overriding considerations. And if you're familiar with those, what they say is, yes, we're going to have impacts, but we're accepting those impacts because we're getting benefits. There are things that override coming up with a project that doesn't have any impacts. And I won't go into all of these, but these are all things that were cited as project benefits in that statement of overriding considerations. You know, creating a town center, a mix of uses, a major destination for the city, high quality architecture and design, all these things that we're getting through the project were deemed by the city council to over, to override the fact that we're going to have some impacts. And really, traffic, air quality, noise are, are issues that are very difficult to mitigate to a level of less than significant here. So where we are right now is we've had a master plan adopted since December, the property owner we know because we work with them and potential development partners, all the time have been talking, you know, for several years with a variety of different parties. We're not involved in those discussions, but from what we understand, they're fairly close, there's at least one party who would like to buy the property, so it's really up to them to consummate whatever deals they're making on their side. Once we have that development team in place, and hopefully even before, we'll be sitting down with them, hopefully before they start putting pen to paper and coming up with their plans, so that we can reiterate to them what our expectations are. Then they go off and, and do all that very detailed planning, that's a very substantial effort to master plan a project of this size with all the things that we've required them to do. Then we review the plans, again, comes through the planning commission and council, we'll look at those in the context of the EIR that we've already adopted, and then assuming we can get through stage two, then we're off and running and they start bringing buildings in and we'll start seeing the project come out of the ground. So that's in a nutshell, kind of where we've been and where we are right now. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know Brian has been involved in some of those discussions with developers, you know, I, I have over the past few years.
Yeah, I thi, I think it's, it's, it's still a good timeframe to, to suggest that even if something were submitted to us tomorrow, we're probably two years before turning dirt out there, so it's, it's not going to happen overnight. There's still a lot of, of work to be done. Just to manage expectations just a little bit.
Just the way I remember it.
Yeah. No, we're, we're good, we're, we're aware of the timeframe on these things, so we're patiently waiting. Any questions? No?
I guess, kind of tying it to the other presentation, hypothetically, if 743 were to kick in, this project, we, we would have difficult time conditioning projects, right? Uh, conditioning this project to all the requirements that we require under the translation, mitigation, right? Hypothetically, right?
Well, we've already done the sequel analysis, so we're done with that. Certainly a project like this is one that would tend to reduce vehicle miles traveled by having a more compact development forum and putting people closer to those employment uses that'll happen in here. Of course, on the other hand, we hope it's going to bring in shoppers from different locations to come in and spend money, but, but we've already been through the sequel analysis on this, so depending on the status of where the law is at the time, if we may have to redo something, that might come up, but. And I know Commissioner Patel has consistently asked us about, you know, let's put shuttles in here, let's do trolley systems, so that's, you know, some other stuff that we'll talk with developers about to make this project. And some of the developers have had some very interesting ideas about self-driving cars within this thing to shuttle people around the project. So there's, it's really, you know, it's a big project that can really support a, some very creative solutions.
Just to kind of put this in comparison, this is 160 acres, the Montclair Regional Shopping Center is only 90 acres, so when you think about size and magnitude of, you know, that is nearly a, a million square feet of retail with a big sea of parking around it, this is not, is 50% bigger than that, so, and could be completely different than that.
I, I only had one question. So I remember when we initially talked about, you know, taking it from the general plan to a specific plan and getting more detailed on it. But I, I seem to recall that we said we would recoup whatever money we put into it upon the sale of the property. Did, did we agree that we weren't going to get our money back at some point that we're not aware of?
Well, I think that's still open, so when we do the stage two processing, we can, there are certainly mechanisms out there available to us to recoup the cost of doing a plan like this, we just haven't implemented that yet.
I mean, I, I know that we did it in, in a benefit to the city too, to try to get developers to come forward, once we kind of laid down what they knew they could build.
Well, part of it was to preserve this land, to, to create a town center, and if we didn't do that, it would, could have been done, developed differently. And, and so, you know, part of it was to create the vision for this area and preserve this area to almost, not, not create a downtown for Eastvale, but to create a civic center, a civic pride, a, a community heartbeat for our community where people want to gather and, and so I think with, with, with that regard, if this, if this property develops, this property will, will be generating more value per acre than any other piece of property anywhere in the city of Eastvale. And, and it could be generating more revenue than a, a significant portion of the rest of Eastvale combined. So the, the way, the way that this specific plan is written, there could be significant revenue coming into the city if it is, even at the minimums, this is, this could create a lot of great economic revenue where we wouldn't be worried about $300,000. But, but, but we, but we would like to, we would like to get that i- if, if, if there is a possibility.
No, I, I'm good. I, I, I mean, we all shared that same vision, we did want it to be a downtown.
Yeah.
So I think we're headed in a, a great direction here.
Yeah.
And, and on the issue of cost, I'll just give kudos to the staff in-house who worked on this, their, their creativity and, and their skill let us bring this project in $100,000 under budget. So that money went back into the general fund and funded other initiatives. And also just kudos to Mr. Brad Leal, because it was really his vision that started this off. I can show you drawings that he put together years before we started working on this, and he turned away a number of residential developers who wanted to, you know, stamp out another subdivision there and told them no. And he did not sell the property because he had this vision in mind, so, so Brad, wherever you are, thank you for giving that.
I would just like to make a recommendation to staff to share, and I don't know what we called it, but the food, the restaurant plan, what did we call it? Because I don't think most of the commissioners know of the restrictions and the desire to have boutique, high-end dining establishments, which I think will help the commission in our other decision-making when it comes to drive-throughs or basic convenience food, because the dining establishments for the Lille property don't allow any of that. And, and I think that's a public document, didn't city council, or was it just?
It's actually, it's in the master plan, I'm so glad you mentioned that, because it, it is in here.
Because that, that's been my biggest, I think, request in sharing this, is because as we continue to get all these restaurants and we're complaining we're not getting any high-end, and the Lille master plan has nothing but the boutique, high-end establishments required, I guess.
Yeah, so in the master plan, keeping in mind, we've got this whole chapter and this, you know, emphasis on level of quality. So in the master plan, we created something different, because we can do that through the master plan. We called it a restaurant development approval. Now that is done by the planning commission. And it says, "All eating establishments within the Lille master plan, including small specialty coffee and eating places," so everything from a coffee shop on up, "will require review and approval of a restaurant development approval or an RDA permit by the planning commission." And you have to make two findings, that it meets all applicable standards of the zoning code, and that it's in keeping with the city's desire to create a high-quality shopping, entertainment, and dining environment in the Lille master plan, and meets the expectations for quality and character as defined in this master plan. That's a very key component, and I'm glad Commissioner Patel brought that up. This is what will ensure we get high-quality restaurants in here. This is not to pick on any fast food, this is the anti-fast food provision in, in here.
And I, I just think it's important for everybody on the commission to know that, so as much as some of the general, basic, fast food things that we have, the master plan protects the city from not having just fast food restaurants in the rest of the community. So I, I don't know if some of the details can be shared, maybe?
Well, I, I think we need to be careful with how we say we protects, because we can say that fast food is not allowed here, but it doesn't create an incentive for the high quality, you know, when, when Eric provided the restaurants and he's, the top two categories, we have two zeros in, currently in the city of Eastvale, remember that presentation in June? This plan, while it's wanting those kind of restaurants, it, it still needs to be financially viable for those restaurants to come here. This is a planning document, this isn't a financial document to get those restaurants here or to secure those restaurants. And so some of our developers or brokers would say that they're still not going to come here. And so we're working to, with, through our economic market analysis that we're doing with the Strategic, Hun-Den Strategic Plan, our partners, to identify what would it take to bring a restaurant like that? But even if you look at Victoria Gardens, and what is at Victoria Gardens, they only have a few of the higher-end restaurants there. Most of their restaurants are still in the lower three categories in Victoria Gardens. And so just, just on comparison, the, these may or may not all be high-end boutique, farm-to-table exper, restaurants, so.
Yeah, and that, it, that process isn't intended to just, it, it doesn't just say, "No fast food." It just says, "Whatever restaurant you're going to bring in, make sure it meets the quality that we're looking for in the plan." So we may end up, you know, with the nicest fast food restaurant in the whole state. Doesn't mean you, you can't approve it.
Yeah, to clear up confusion, it's, I don't know if it's other commission members, I'm well aware of the Lille master plan, I was here for a part of it, and I know what it requires in it. As far as drive-throughs go, in my opinion, and past opinion, even before any of this came up, is, I mean, it's, it's not only just a type, I'm not, personally, I'm not looking for high-end, I'm looking for a mix of the in-betweens you just spoke about. Because like I said, in planning, it's, yes, it's revenue's important, we got to get the right businesses, but these things shape our city. All right, we look at the landscape of it in, in five, 10, 15 years, and that's the reason, and there are many other reasons why, you know, why I wouldn't want drive-throughs, and more than welcome to clear that up with staff, if staff has confusions on what I'm looking for, as well as the commission.
So, so we heard you guys loud and clear at, at the planning commission meeting about drive-throughs and some of the positions that are on the planning commission. We also made that same presentation to city council last week, and, and city council was very appreciative of the data, so that they were, had informed information. We are working towards getting the economic market analysis from Hun-Den Strategic Partners back to council sometime in the fall. We have about 14 drive-throughs on pre-application process or in some kind of process right now. So we are, we are diligently working to understand how we can diversify our restaurants. You will probably see a, a, a survey come out to the planning commissioners from Olivia Applegate, our, our communications specialist, to ask you, "Where are you going outside of Eastvale and what types of restaurants are you leaving Eastvale to go to?" So that we can understand the date-night experience, where you go for celebratory places outside of Eastvale, where you go for cultural and ethnic restaurants, where you go for experience, experiential dining, where you go for a number of different categories. And so we're, we're going to ask those things so that we know how far people are driving, where are people spending their money, how much money are they spending if they want to share that with us, so that we can use that data to communicate with brokers and restaurateurs. But we have a very committed council that is also very passionate about the same issue, topic, and so I, I think we'll see some issues addressed in our restaurant market over time.
Yeah, and chairman, right in the list of prohibited uses, kind of sandwiched in here between check-cashing places and fortune-telling, is drive-throughs. Drive-in and drive-through are prohibited anywhere in the, in the Lille master plan. So that, that's again, something that we're going to make sure the developers are well aware of.
On a side note, maybe for Brian and Eric, I've been in communication with Grant Ross in regards to, is it the merch?
Yes.
Yeah, and so he's been, I, I've given him a list and opinion of sort of what I've been talking about the last few years and what I'm looking for as well.
If you'd like to share that list with Eric and myself, we'd like to also see that list so that we can, on, on behalf of the city, we can go out and, and champion bringing restaurants to the city, so.
Because I've been yelling about that for years.
Yeah, we, we have some committed council members and, and my staff that are looking to be ambassadors to identify ways to bring different types of restaurants to Eastvale, so. that are looking to be ambassadors to identify ways to bring different types of restaurants to Eastville, so.
I think Commissioner Lee and I also gave a similar list to Goodman as well a few months ago, about six months ago, so we'll see.
So on that note, we have an economic development manager recruitment that's going to be going out either tonight or tomorrow. So this will be one of our, this is one of the city council's recently adopted budget positions. So that was adopted June 27th, and this is already going out for recruitment to attract a talented, seasoned economic development manager to help be our ambassador with businesses in our community as well as attract and retain businesses to the City of Eastville. So you'll see some extensive economic development efforts happening in the very near future. We're looking to fill that position probably by September, October at the latest. So we're very excited about that. We created a really flashy brochure and everything like that to attract the top talent in Southern California.
Thank you. Moving on to staff reports, is there any from staff?
None really. You have our monthly update from June in your package tonight. The July one will be in the city council package that goes out for next week's meeting. So you can catch up and then next week, see a more updated version. We have done a lot of stuff in process, one of which we're going to talk about in a few minutes, which is the Merge.
One thing that I wanted to, I was asked to update you from Olivia Applegate, our public information officer. She sent you all an email yesterday or the day before about getting your headshots. And we have a Chamber of Commerce business in Eastville that has provided a discount to the City of Eastville, and we are covering the cost of it. We just need you to show up looking pretty with a smile on your face and take a picture so that we can use it. She sent you the dates and times. One is till 8:30 tonight, but you're going to miss that in 15 minutes. And then also tomorrow, and I believe Friday, but if you can check the email or look for the email from Olivia Applegate and get over to see John, he's a great guy here, a resident in Eastville, and he'll take a great shot of you and then provide it to Olivia. And he'll even touch you up, I mean, he made me look it, so that's no easy task.
Cool.
You can laugh, Karen. I see you can laugh. I saw her trying to hold it in.
Yeah, we're getting towards the end. Are we going through the scoping meeting section?
Yes, we still have that.
Okay, so do you want to do this before we go into communications?
Yeah, let's do that. So you mentioned the Merge, which is the topic of the scoping meeting. And this is our other SEQA superstar, Christine Donahue, another one of those people that I go to for advice on difficult and sometimes arcane secret topics. And she is going to run us through that. Thank you, Christine.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, speaking of the Merge, um, so this is our first meeting. So this is our first meeting. And let's, we'll go through this pretty quick. This is the fourth, you know, whatever we're doing this. A little overview of the environmental impact process, an overview of the proposed project, the issues that we expect to be evaluated in the environmental impact report, the anticipated project schedule, and then help on that. So first of all, this is the first meeting, why would you want? When you're planning a environmental impact report, it's important to get public input so that we could have a notice letting public know, letting agencies know, that we're preparing an environmental impact report and they have an opportunity to provide input on what we said. It's an opportunity to introduce the project and present a number of environmental processes and again, get input on the project, the environmental impact report. So the Merge is located northwest corner of Lyman Heights and Archibald Dowling. Currently in agricultural use, to the north, there is a drainage channel, and to the east, there's adjacent residential. So the project includes a ground plan amendment to change the land use designation currently to light industrial, to change the portion of it to commercial retail, change the zone from heavy agriculture to general industrial park, includes a major development review for bulk retail and warehouse buildings, attention parcel map to separate property under condition use permits. There are five drivers proposed and as well as alcohol sales. This is a little bit of a breakdown. There is an additional breakdown in the notes of preparation which is published on the city's website. There's car wash, gas station, restaurants, shops, grocery, and drugstore, as well as the light industrial buildings. So all told, we're looking at a project center 26 acres and a total of building spend of $409,000. So an environmental impact report includes a description of the environmental study project and that's down there on a general basis as well as on a topic-by-topic basis. The project impacts in this test, we look at short-term impacts as we do the construction-related impacts, long-term impacts, those are associated with your long-term operation of the new development, and then cumulative impacts. So we look at the impacts of the project as well as other related projects that are being developed simultaneously, and to see if there's a combined effect. We also, we have impacts that are significant and unavoidable. We specifically look at alternatives that could be implemented that might avoid or lessen those environmental impacts. And then we also look at the location to help reduce the impacts. Yes. So this is just a little illustration of how we communicate. So you have the proposed project and when it exceeds the threshold which you do, which drives the certification up then, brings the impact below that threshold on. So that's a consideration that we're listing. So that's our goal. So at this point, the study areas that we're looking at, we're looking at preparing a fairly comprehensive environmental impact report addressing all of these key topics. There's a few topics such as structural and things like natural resources. So we're pretty much covering everything. This is where we're actually talking about the community environmental scoping. We're asking the public, we're asking you, we're asking agencies, what do you think we should check? What do you think we should know as per course of this process? So there is notices that have gone out, we're beginning to see comments from private companies. So once we're through the scoping process, actually do our design preparation of the draft DIR, so that's in progress, technical reports are in progress. The scoping helps inform, you know, we need to make adjustments of the draft DIR. We can do that. The, once the DIR is prepared, it goes to the public for public review, agency review, and then respond to those comments in a responsive document that begins by the planning DIR. And then the agency can make the decision on that. So next steps, so the comments we do at the end of the launch, whether we expect the public draft DIRs to be available later this summer. And it'll be, again, should be good for a 45-day public review. Then we'll prepare responsive comments that produce a environmental impact report. And we expect to have a hearing later this year, in 2018 or 2019. Okay, so this is the important part, is how you comment. Anybody who would like to can come up and make comments tonight. We've got comments, you can fill one of these out. You can leave it if it's going to be done later. You can do it here or call them and talk them up. So as long as you get your comments in, it's a live open. If they don't, we can come up and cover it up. Questions, comments? If anybody wants to make a comment?
I have a question. Well, I don't know if the other commissioners would like this information sent to them, but if, could you find out the specific restrictions the airport district has on the type of establishments that can be there? As far as, I know there's a limit on, you know, foot traffic and everything else, so.
Yeah, I can send you the, maybe just send you a link to where you can find it online. There's an airport land use, it's called an Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan that was adopted by Riverside County for the Chino Airport, which is the one that really affects this site. It divides this particular site pretty much the same way the Walmart site was divided into two different zones. And in each zone, there's a limit on the number of people who are expected to congregate in one area. And the critical number there is, I think, 450 people in an acre. So, but that's, another, a parallel process to all of this is this whole project is going to be run through the Airport Land Use Commission. And we'll get their recommendations back. So there's both that issue, and we don't really see a problem with them getting through that because the buildings here are relatively small. Walmart was somewhat difficult because it was such a large building. But the smaller buildings, just by virtue of their size, you can't fit that many people in them. But there's that issue, and then there's an issue of open space areas for aircraft emergencies that have to be set aside. So if you recall, the Walmart project had to landscape parts of the parking lot differently to avoid having things that are over four feet tall, which is the maximum that the airport commission will allow in those areas. So, but that all is being run through the Airport Land Use Commission, and that'll be part of the recommendations to come back to the planning commission and council when you see the project. But I'll be happy to send you a link to where you can download that plan. It's fairly straightforward to read through. You're looking for zones C and D, which is what this, C is more restrictive, D is less restrictive, and the east, western half is in zone C and the eastern half is in zone D.
Because my thought process in it is, is how likely are those to change? Because I know those, but, I mean, the restrictions are very, I mean, it gives us limited options for.
They've been talking about revising that compatibility plan for a while now, but it hasn't happened yet.
Thank you.
I had one question. So the zoning change that will come forward at some point, is this been part of either the county or the city's general plan from the beginning? Or is this something we're changing now?
No, this is entirely new. So this is a change to both the general plan and the zoning. So this site, in the general plan, since day one, has always been identified entirely as light industrial. So the idea of carving it out, carving out a corner, is certainly something that staff has been talking with potential developers about for years. We want to have a commercial corner there. But it is different. And then the zone change that goes along with it just matches up with that general plan, the new general plan designation. So yeah, this is a change from what we've historically had as a long-term land use policy.
So this property, when we did our general plan from the county, you know, quite a few years ago, was it zoned? Did we know we were going to change it to commercial property at that time? Was that the intention?
No, it came to us from the county with a light industrial general plan designation on it, and we left that in place. So when we did our first general plan, in order to get that done in a timely manner and within the budget that we had, we didn't change any land.
We just left it then?
We just left it there, yeah.
Just curious.
Kind of in same line, did the developer actually thought about changing it to commercial, the entire property, rather than having, leaving out some acreage for the light industrial?
Doing the entire thing as retail?
Yeah.
Nobody has come to us with that idea. But we've consistently held out for at least this amount of retail development. And we, you know, some arm-twisting and a lot of discussions with them led to getting a project that has that in it.
So the developers actually prefer the light industrial, it looks like?
I think they would say that they see a market for the amount of retail that they've shown and then the rest of it, light industrial. We'll let them talk to you in more detail about that when it comes to you later on this year.
So then I have a second question then. So when we carve out a small area like that for retail and we get specific, what we say we would allow in there, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to come after another grocery store when we already have, you know, six of them in the city. Are we allowing something that's going to hurt some of the other businesses we already have? Especially with Walmart coming in. It seems like we're going to have an awful lot of grocery stores if that's something that they think that they need.
Well, we can't divulge who they've been talking to, but there are grocers out there that the city has expressed a desire in having. One of those is one that they say they've got lined up for this project.
Okay.
Without saying who that is.
Sure.
It's one that the city has consistently told developers, "Go after this short list," and it's one on that short list.
And it looks like they're adamant about the five drive-throughs?
Pardon me?
They're adamant about the five drive-through proposals? And the gas station?
That's part of their application. We talked them down from seven drive-throughs to five, but they're still holding tight at five right now. Doesn't mean you have to prove it, but that's their proposal, so we will process it.
Another car wash. So as part of the DIR, can they, can we get them to do alternative analysis on reducing the drive-throughs and the car wash and stuff?
So, because we have alternative analysis in our environmental action work, is you're going to advise you're going to have some, we don't know what it is yet, but if they are, if they were traffic and changing one of those spaces, would this restrict the permission to allow less than three different gas stations?
Maybe that's something to consider.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I lied, it was a long meeting instead of a short meeting. I'm sorry. So on the commission communications, is there anything from anybody?
Commission comments?
Oh, okay, seems like there is, so we'll start with Josh.
I just have one comment. Kudos to staff for the Fourth of July push to limit the fireworks and the enforcement push that you guys had. I think it did make a little bit of dent and difference, but I think we should continue that on every year. Because it's one of my worst days of the year because my dog goes crazy. And, you know, like, yeah, it's just nuts, so.
We had quite the success between the police department and code enforcement on citations. And they were very present out in the community, responding fairly quickly, so.
Commissioner Patel?
I have a couple of things. So you know the property over by Ralph's? There's been a lot of activity there. And I know we talked about something a while ago that, you know, condos or something that were possibly going to go there. Is that starting to come to fruition now?
It is, yeah. There's a recorded subdivision on that property. So there are legal lots and streets already created. So what they've been doing, we just talked to Public Works about that today. What they've been doing so far is what we call clearing, clearing and grubbing, kind of, you know, scraping the brush off. They will come in and get a grading permit to grade that subdivision. They will come in and get a grading permit to grade that subdivision. And you'll see on an agenda, probably September, Knika? September, you'll see an item on your agenda, which will be the development review of the homes that they propose to put on there. Pulte is the home builder, so they bought that tract and they plan to build the homes. So, it's one of those unusual things. Usually, you don't see a map go final and then sit there that long, but it's been a final map for years, sitting underneath the dirt, if you will. So, where those roads come up from the south, the cul-de-sacs, all that's already been planned and approved, and now they're actually building it.
Well, the only reason I was curious is because it seems like we talked about this a while ago. And I thought they had to do it within a certain amount of time before their permit expired. So, if they come in and talk to us and tell us they're continuing, then they're good.
Well, because they have a final map, they're not subject to the expirations that we've had on some of the other projects, like the other project behind the Bootsma House. That was one that we've, you've seen, or the council has seen several times over the past few years. That's because they haven't gone final with their map yet. But, this one went final years ago, so it's just been sitting there waiting to be developed, and that's what you see happening now.
It's the difference between a tentative map and a final map. The tentative map has to actually develop, and then they can finalize. But, if you finalize a map, it can just sit there forever.
That's good enough.
Is that a county thing? Is that a county, Riverside County?
That was all approved by the county. That was way before incorporation.
They've submitted grading plans and hydrology and so forth, and I suspect they'll be actually doing grading here in the next couple of weeks, so they'll have approved plans and permits.
Okay. And then, my second comment or request would be, and Commissioner Patel said something about it earlier when we were talking about signs. I did a ride around with Mario yesterday morning, and it was really a great experience in sharing, you know, his views on where we struggle as a city trying to enforce certain things. But, one of the things that we talked about earlier was yard sales. And it's funny, even if we increase the amount of code enforcement people we have, it is almost virtually impossible to hold people accountable and keep the signs down. And I think we're spending a lot of energy doing that, getting the signs off of posts and poles and... And they, you know, most of the residents, I'll bet you 80%, do not abide by where the signs are supposed to be for a yard sale. And they don't take them down, so then it's left up to us. So, I think it's something that we should visit again, like the city of Ontario, where they have four yard sales a year. And if you're having a yard sale any other time than that, somehow, I think we need to take some of the pressure off our code enforcement. And I think that wouldn't hurt.
I appreciate the impact, and we are reviewing code enforcement. We can look from a policy decision. My code enforcement is able to respond, and we are staffing up and we are staffed up. So, we are in the process of hiring an office specialist to support our code enforcement so that our officers and technicians can be out in the field more. We're also working to have street sweeping enforcement out in the neighborhoods and taking that off the CSO responsibility. So, you'll see a change in code enforcement. But, I'm not sure that my code enforcement is overtaxed at this point. We're in the process of staffing appropriately.
Yeah, and by no means did he complain.
No, no, I know.
I mean, it was...
I know.
My question to him was, is, you know, how are we getting yard sale signs under control? Because as hot as it's been, it's been busy weekends with some of the yard sales.
Yes.
And there are just signs everywhere. Now, those signs, none of them complied with the rules we have.
Yeah.
That I can see, none.
So, part of it is education and awareness, and we have a great communications team, and so, we might work towards providing some educational awareness on where to put signs for garage sales. But, typically, they're going out at 6:00 AM, and the garage sale's over at noon, or 2:00, or something like that. So, you know, it's a quick, it's a quick thing, and so, you know, we're still out there. Even though our realtors know how to put up their signs, we're still removing repeat offenders on the realtor's signs, and they pay the fines, so, to get their signs back. So, there are, there are people that, once we communicate the rules, there are people that still choose not to follow them, and so... But, yes, we are working to remove those signs, and that is part of the code enforcement responsibility. It is part of the community's responsibility to remove them as well, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Couple of things. I might be on the opposite aisle of Commissioner Lee, but because of the lack of activities during, on the 4th of July in the city of Eastvale, I think it's time that we legalize safe and sane fireworks in the city of Eastvale. That's my opinion, something to do, some way to celebrate the 4th of July. And I would like to announce the birth of my eighth grandchild.
Congratulations.
Levi Samuel Andrade, to my youngest daughter, Kristen. Number eight. And I was just informed that number nine is on the way for my other daughter. So, in a few months, about nine months, I'll be announcing another one.
I'm barely on my first son.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, that's a lot of kids.
Just want that on the record.
I have one follow-up. I know before, when the previous city attorney left and we had an interim, I had to inquire about invocation for the planning commission because city council gets invocation. So, I got a memo, and then they basically stated a lot of legal terms, but I'm trying to recall. Basically, it's allowed, but we have to sort of, I don't know, legal has to do something about it. And so, I didn't bring it up. I figured, you know, wait until we get somebody more permanent to maybe look into it, so I'm just following up on that. Thank you.
If, I'm sure, I'm sure we have the memo that was sent to you at some point, but if you come across it, if you can send it to me or to Eric?
I'll send it.
That would be great. Thank you.
Cool, thank you. And, well, thank you to staff and everybody else, and the commission, and the audience. And we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:40.